All right, I'd like to call at order the January nineteenth, twenty twenty-three, regular meeting of the Naperville Park District Board of Commissioners. Please stand and pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, infinite and just as far.
Your call, please.
President Gibson?
Here.
Vice President Ruffin?
Here.
Commissioner Anzier?
Here.
Commissioner Jenner?
Here.
Commissioner McBroom?
Here.
Commissioner Todd?
Here.
Thank you, Bridgette. Are there any matters from public on general issues?
There are none.
Let's start with the Wester DuPage Special Recreation Association's annual visit.
All right, good evening. About halfway through this year's annual board visits, I visit all nine boards that our agency serves. I wouldn't tell the other eight, but this one is always a little extra special to me. Naperville resident, very active family of users of your many amenities, which is great in itself, but also to be part of a team professionally that contributes to what you all do in inclusiveness and providing those experiences and quality of life, I just feel very fortunate. So with that said, just a few highlights from our annual report. I'd like to start with just some of the things that we collaborate on. This is by no means comprehensive, but some of the important things that we partner with are our Rec and Roll Community Day Program. As individuals leave our educational partners when they're twenty-two years of age, many families are not sure what to do next, Rec and Roll is something that fills that gap. And we have sites in seven of our nine communities now. Community Day Program, they're out in the community, they're at Fortville, they're at Sportsman's, doing activities with their group, their community, really just a great program. Santa's Workshop, we saw that just here a couple months ago. Special Needs Nights. Fortville hosts our National Baccio Tournament that brings players from all over the Midwest and nationally. Inclusion Services, that's one of the more important things that we try to provide. Your team is when a family wants an individual to take a Naperville Park District program and they have somebody that needs some accommodations, our staff has the expertise and the training to adapt that experience without setting that individual off to the side or making them feel like they're having a different experience. It just becomes a seamless experience, and we really pride ourselves on trying to meet a high level of those requests in a timely manner. Foundation support, we have a very active foundation, and Naperville Park District's been super supportive with regards to our BASH, which is our annual fundraiser, as well as our golf outing each summer, so we greatly appreciate that. Disability Awareness Training, we are happy to come in as you hire maybe an employee that has a disability or any of your corporate partners, or really anybody, we can provide disability training ongoing so that it's maybe not top-of-mind thing, but that everybody has a frame of reference from which to operate as you think about this population. And then strategic planning, just a small shout-out, Executive Director Wilson and Director Coats. We just went through about six months of strategic planning, and they're very generous with their time, and I'll have a quick note on that later as well. Talked about being fortunate earlier to be part of your team, just some things I've done in my second year with the agency. Think I've been there twenty months now. Very lucky just to represent WD at a lot of different functions, whether it's the USA Games down in Orlando, where we had three Naperville athletes win gold, they were part of Team Illinois. It wasn't a WD team, but it was Team Illinois, and they're very active WD participants, and you can see their pictures there in play football. Visiting all our sites, expanding my knowledge of therapeutic recreation, attended a symposium in the Midwest, again, to learn more about my team's tools and techniques in serving this population. IPD, IPRA, we've got that coming up next week. Trying to continue to meet our local legislators and advocate for resources that we might need. And again, strategic planning, looking ahead to the future, twenty-three to two thousand twenty-six. At the end of this strategic plan, WD will be celebrating fifty years of serving the community, so that's something that we're focused on and excited about. Some quick organizational highlights, we're happy to be named one of the best and the best resources for special needs families in the western suburbs. Athletics, spoke about that a little bit, but we had great results at the state, national, and even international level over in Brazil. And Rec and Roll, we've got some numbers there, but just one takeaway is we've seen about a thirty percent increase in the number of applications and families that are looking to be served. Currently, we use a lottery to kind of manage that, but ideally, we wouldn't want to turn anybody away, so that's going to be something that we continue to look at. And then just from an organizational perspective from my chair, one thing that I'd like to highlight, and Brad's heard this at our meetings for last year, and I'm sure you might be familiar with this too, but more than half of our full-time staff is either brand-new to the agency or in a new role in the last twelve months. So we are still just developing that institutional kind of knowledge and professionalism that, you know, we need to operate at our highest level. Restore and rebuild, that was one of the themes of last year's annual report. What does that mean? Well, we had to get back into our spaces, reestablish where we were serving. We had to look at our services and find how we're serving, and do we need to serve differently? And then, as I mentioned on the previous slide, just a really high focus on staff, bringing on new staff, and the training that goes along with that. Just highlighting some of the numbers, and you all have the full report at your places if you want to dive deeper. No real surprise with Naperville's size that you're by far the largest driver of our numbers. Almost half of our WDSRA programs, those registrations come from Naperville, and well over a third of our inclusion requests for the year come from Naperville. One thing that we're going to be focused on in our strategic plan, and if there's one thing you remember from this short presentation tonight, is we want those numbers to go up. We don't want to be a secret, so if you know any families, any individuals that have special needs that you think could benefit from our services, just please remember WDSRA. We have a couple of impact stories in your book. One, I'll just highlight the level of impact that we can have. Sophie was an individual that had four diagnoses led by autism. She also had anxiety, depression, so these diagnoses we see go together quite frequently. Four trips to the hospital, mom was sort of reaching the end of her rope, and they're just looking for some normalcy and some community and activities for Sophie to do. WDSRA came into the conversation in that fourth visit, and since joining our programs and getting into a regular routine, has just seen a night-and-day difference in the outcomes that that family experiences. So I'd just like to highlight because we do work with a portion of the population that is really so vulnerable and has made even more so over the last two or three years, so we're especially proud of the services that we provide and want to keep looking to enhance those in any way. I do like to highlight our scholarship assistance. We have not turned anybody away. Those numbers were a little low last year, just because, again, I think we still were operating at maybe seventy to eighty percent of our usual capacity, but we are seeing a big uptake, uptick in scholarship assistance. And I mentioned that too from our side because very often, families with an individual with a disability have extra support and extra resources they have to give that impacts them financially. So that's a part of our organization, that our foundation really takes head-on, and we're going to look to expand our tools, whether it's through endowment or other things, to make sure that that scholarship assistance not only remains, but grows going forward. And lastly, just to wrap up, we are going to be kicking off our strategic plan in May of two thousand twenty-three. It'll guide us for the next three years. I hope to be back here next year talking about some of the fun stuff in the strategic plan and, again, continue to engage all of you as we turn fifty in a few years and celebrate that milestone together, grow our programs, and really focus on our staff and what we need to do to continue to be, I think, one of the gold standards in special recreation in Illinois. So with that said, happy to take questions or any discussion.
Thank you, Dan. Thanks for all you did for the committee.
Appreciate it.
Any questions?
Thanks for having me tonight. Appreciate it.
Next, do you have the consent agenda? Bridgette, do you mind the consent agenda, please?
Item four point one, approved December twenty twenty-two dispersments made to the Bank of America Purchasing Card Program in the amount of three hundred and forty-seven thousand, two hundred and seventeen dollars makes sense. Four point two, approved December eighth, twenty twenty-two regular meeting minutes. Four point three, approved December eighth, twenty twenty-two executive session close meeting minutes. Four point four, approved January five, twenty twenty-three regular meeting minutes. Four point five, approved January five, twenty twenty-three, I'm sorry, twenty twenty-two executive session close meeting minutes. Four point six, move to find that supply chain issues have made procurement of transportation vehicles no longer adaptable to competitive bidding and to ratify and approve, make, quote, the action of the executive director in purchasing one for transit from Ford up homeward for forty thousand, eight hundred and fifty-seven dollars. And four point seven, approve addendum number one to the Sackor Referee Retservices Agreement with Official Finders LLC.
Thank you, Bridgette. Are there any items to be removed from the consent agenda?
Move to accept consent agenda items four point one through four point seven.
Second. Your call, please.
President Ruffin?
Yes.
Commissioner Thompson?
Yes.
Commissioner Anzier?
Yes.
Commissioner Jenner?
Yes.
Commissioner McBroom?
Yes.
Commissioner Todd?
Yes.
President Gibson?
Yes.
Move to approve consent agenda items four point one through four point seven.
Second. On favor? No unfinished business, on to new business. Naperville Golf Course Code Number Eighteen, replacement.
Thank you, President Gibson. Staff is anticipating providing for the board's consideration and approval next month a contract for construction of a new green complex at Naperville Golf Course, which will allow future expansion of the practice facility. This project is part of our Golf Master Improvement Plan to provide excellent practice facilities at our golf courses, and it's the first phase of a two-phase project. The project goal for this phase of the work is to create a new green for the eighteenth hole at Naperville, which will allow the current eighteenth green to be reconfigured for a chipping and bunker practice complex. The proximity of the current eighteenth green provides the best option for adding this feature, which will allow Naperville to have a similar short game practice facility like we currently have over at Springbrook. This expansion will provide more space and options for programming, lessons, and daily use by our golf course patrons. We received three very competitive bids for the project, and we're able to choose the lowest, most responsible bidder that provided a total price for the work of two hundred and fifteen thousand, six hundred, one hundred and sixty-five dollars. This is well within our two thousand twenty-three capital budget for this project, which had a total budget of five hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. Staff limited the project scope with concerns about the current inflationary costs possibly causing the project to exceed our budget, but we will now be able to work with the project architect and consider additional work to be completed on the project later in two thousand twenty-three. The work is scheduled for completion by September fifteenth and will not impact the play on the course or the use of the current practice facilities. The reconfiguring of the current eighteenth green will be the second phase of the project, and that is expected to be completed in two thousand twenty-four.
How is the eighteenth hole going to be reconfigured then?
So if you are thinking about Naperville Golf Course, and you probably understand, behind the eleventh green, between the eighteenth green and number twelve, is about acre and a half of old space, it's a native area. So we're going to move the eighteenth green to end right behind the eleventh green, we'll build a new green right behind number eleven. And then that'll open up that whole area next to the clubhouse for new practice.
It'd be nice to have a practice area here.
Go off to the right? Yeah, we'll go off to the right. It'll actually kind of play as a double dog, like your tee shot will go up, you go off to the left, and then you go back to the right. It should be a really fun and challenging hole.
Dr. Cross, can you speak to, are we recently up to the practice area at Springbrook as well, right, and the popularity of that? I mean, is there demand in the community for?
Oh, absolutely. And this goes back to when we did the master plan, sitting down with our residents, patrons, they were overwhelmingly demanding or asking for additional practice facilities. And we just opened up the expanded Naperville Practice Facility this past year, and this year, we saw a fifty percent increase in use just in this first year, so we're expecting big things. Jeremy?
Hey, Kevin, the budget, five seventy-five, was that the budget for the entire, that was just for the phase one?
Phase one.
So are apples to apples with the phase one bid being lower than the phase one budget?
We took a couple of things out because we were kind of concerned about how everything's been pricing out. So there's some things along eighteen, some Birmingham and bunkers that we had pulled out of this project, and we're going to wait and do them in phase two. But now we have the opportunity to go back to the architects, and we can rebid these and put these in at a later date and possibly get this completed in twenty-three. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Cross. Next, Administration Building Exterior Door and Window Replacements.
Good evening. So the Administration Building Exterior Door and Window Replacements Project is planned to be presented to the park board for approval in February. The scope of work includes removal and replacement of all exterior doors and windows. At the Administration Building, the existing windows are original to the facility, and that goes back forty years, so nineteen eighty-three to two thousand twenty-three, and they're at their end, they're a useful lifecycle. The proposal is to frame windows and doors that will comply with the most recent International Energy Conservation Code. A total of two hundred and seventy thousand dollars is allocated in the two thousand twenty-three capital budget for this project, and pending contract approval, work is expected to occur during the spring/summer with project completion by fall.
Any questions? All right, thank you. Next, Alfred Rubin Riverwalk Community Center, Room One to Three Dance Floor Replacement.
Yes, so a contract for this project is planned to be presented to the park board for approval in February. The scope of work includes removal and replacement of the existing dance floor in Room One, Two, Three at the Alfred Rubin Riverwalk Community Center. In spring twenty twenty-two, staff became aware of some of the floor boards coming up, creating a potentially tripping hazard. After review of the condition of the tire floor with multiple foreign contractors, it was determined that a total replacement was needed. The existing floor system was installed in two thousand fourteen. A total of forty-two thousand dollars is allocated in the two thousand twenty-three capital budget for this project. Pending approval, work is expected to occur in the spring. We could go to have little or no impact to the program schedules. Also, I'd like to know, today, we actually had a bid opening for this project, and we received two bids. One was for forty-six thousand dollars, or approximately forty-six thousand, and one was for approximately fifty-nine thousand dollars. We're looking at the low bidder, making sure, doing our due diligence, that is, it is the responsive, responsible bid. It is over budget by a little over four thousand dollars. It is part of an annual building capital allowance, so there's additional funds in that allowance. In two thousand twenty-three, there's over five hundred thousand dollars in funds available to cover that difference, as well as there's a deduct in the bid, and that was for eight thousand, seven hundred dollars, and that was for our staff to do the demolition. So we're going to look to see if we can do that and probably bring it in with the budget, but I want to let you know as a board, we're also going to look at the resources of our staff and other projects we'll be working on this spring to see if that's a good fit. And we'll outline all that in the memo that'll be presented to the board in February. Just a little heads up there.
Thanks. Evan Carr, question, Director Schuiz. What's the expected lifespan of the dance floor?
It really depends on usage. So programming and usage, we try to get five to ten years. From two thousand fourteen to where we're at, I think we're about eight years since we took it out of service last year and had some concerns with it. But being an actively used, functional, in this case, a floor, it all depends how much is being used. We have the same scenario when we look at synthetic turf, for example. If the synthetic turf field is being used more, sometimes more at the high school level than maybe at a park district level, it's going to wear down, it has to be replaced much sooner.
Are there one to two things?
Yeah, there is, but usually they're about one to two years. When you get out like past five years, it's pretty much, you're on your own. But again, the first thing we looked at was safety, you know, and then from the assessment from the other contractors that reviewed it last year when we identified the problem, there was just so much movement underneath it in the subfloor, it needed to be replaced.
You have other questions on that?
This is more kind of your ask, the question, how long is the bidding open for usually for products?
The bidding?
Yes.
Yeah, so bidding phase per state statute is about, at a minimum, of ten calendar days, so it was about probably about two weeks, I think, on this particular project. It all depends on the scope of work. On a larger project, we might have it out for three weeks or more, but at a minimum, we have to have it out for ten calendar days.
All right, my guess is Centennial State Park's here as well.
Yep. Contract for this project is anticipated to be presented to the park board for approval in February. As a member of a cooperative purchasing network, the park district has the opportunity to contract directly with Spawn Ranch based on competitive bidding pricing already set for products and services. The scope of work for this portion of the project consists of improvements to the skate facility, including addition of concrete balls, skating elements with new structures and surfacing. In addition to the scope of work, general construction aspects, the improvements including demolition and removal, minor site work, and the installation of shelter and site furnishings are planned to be addressed as part of separate contracts and presented to the board for approval at future meetings as needed in order to expedite the project schedule, so we're breaking that out from this portion. In two thousand twenty-two, the park district worked with Spawn Ranch on the design for renovations to the Centennial Park Skate Facility. The park district, in collaboration of Spawn Ranch, conducted community outreach to gather user feedback through an online survey and public meetings. The project team utilized input received and developed the final skate facility layout and overall scope of work. A total of six hundred thousand dollars is allocated in the two thousand twenty-three capital budget for this project. Pending contract approval, work is expected to occur during the summer with the intent to resource every potential fault. Also, you may recall earlier, we provided updates on the Rothfelmel family with the DuPage Foundation, and the naming of this as the Rothfelmel Family Skate Facility. We also plan to bring that to the board for consideration, the donation agreement with DuPage Foundation and the second part of that eight, that's sixty days, and so that will be brought to the board next month as well.
So the skate park is going to be out of commission for part of the summer while it's being built?
Yes, and that's a very good point. We discussed this internally, and it's really based on the installers, and we're talking about concrete, so like roadways too, you know, construction season is the summer season, and so we'll work with staff on the recreation side and also knowing that the beach operation's going to be open, how to best handle that while we're also operating the beach. So we're aware of that, and we also know that's the best time to do this project. Ideally, you'd love to do it early in the spring or maybe in the fall, but then you're dealing with temperatures and precipitation.
Okay, makes sense. Any other questions on that?
Director Schuiz, can you just remind me, is the reason for the renovation, is it dangerous or complaints about the park or?
Yeah, it was based on input from our staff and users about the equipment itself. It was just past its lifecycle, so it was a project that I worked on years ago. I think it was first installed in two thousand and four, and we identified that was a need for renovation. And then starting that process last year, as you may recall, we did that extensive community outreach, where we brought the skaters in, they looked at it, and provided input, and that's where we ended up on this. And then we're also very fortunate to receive that generous donation through the Rothfelmel Family Club with DuPage Foundation.
First Amendment to the IGA lease between Naperville Park District and District Two-O-Three, Board Education for Huntington Estates Park.
Yes, so this one, on August ninth, two thousand and twelve, the park district and the Board Education of Naperville Community Unit School District Two-O-Three entered into an intergovernmental lease for the property commonly known as Huntington Estates Park. As part of development of the Ann Reed Early Childhood Center, School District Two-O-Three constructed a playground and basketball court for community use. Following execution of the two thousand twelve intergovernmental lease, the park district maintained the playground and basketball amenities within the designated lease area. Recent, School District, recently, School District Two-O-Three staff expressed the need to utilize an asphalt basketball court area next to the Ann Reed Early Childhood Center for vehicular parking during school hours. Based on this need, School District Two-O-Three and Naperville Park District staff, legal councils formulated First Amendment to remove the basketball amenities from the original improvement lease or intergovernmental lease terms in this property area while keeping the playground in place for the remaining twenty-year term associated with the two thousand twelve agreement. Per the First Amendment, any future maintenance of the basketball amenities shall be at the sole discretion expense of School District Two-O-Three. Furthermore, School District Two-O-Three intends to keep the basketball nets in place for community use during non-school hours when the asphalt surface is not needed for vehicular parking. As related to January fifth, two thousand twenty-three Parks and Rec Committee meeting, the First Amendment to the intergovernmental lease is planned to be presented for approval via ordinance at the February ninth park board meeting. So just an update.
Great. Gartner Park and Habsburg Grove Playground renovations.
Purchase orders to secure play equipment for the Gartner Park and Habsburg Grove Playground renovation projects are anticipated to be presented to the park board for authorization in February. Last month, residents completed play equipment surveys, and the results helped select the future play equipment. The selected play equipment is planned to be ordered in February via purchasing orders. Furthermore, staff will publicly bid the construction portions of the playground renovation projects, and the selected contractors will take delivery and install the play equipment. The contracts for the construction work is scheduled to be presented to the park board for approval in the first half of this year.
Naperville Salute Agreement, my bad. On to Director Schuiz.
We'll give Eric a break, and I'll take this one. So at the February ninth meeting, we will be bringing an amendment to the Naperville Salute Agreement to the board. Per the agreement, every year, we amend that agreement to establish the event dates and location of our locations. So this year, it will be back at Rotary Hill, and the event has requested the dates of Friday, June thirtieth through Monday, July third. So that's what will be included in the amendment, and again, we plan to bring that to the board on February ninth.
Any questions on that? All right, thank you. Two thousand twenty-three T-shirt bid.
Good evening. We are currently in the process of soliciting bids for our program T-shirts, the jerseys, hats, and staff uniforms. We have sent the bid to over seventy vendors, fifteen of which are new this year. After the bid opening on January twenty-fourth, staff will evaluate the bids received, and a contract recommendation will be presented to the board at the next board meeting on February ninth.
Any questions? Any questions? Do we know what slogan we're putting on them this year? The sportsmanship slogan last year, has that decided yet?
You know what? We haven't decided that yet. Yeah, not quite there yet, but give us time.
Sounds great. All right, thank you, Director. Thanks. All right. On to department updates. Administration.
Just a quick update regarding the IPD, IPRA conference taking place the twenty-sixth through the twentieth of January. We have twelve staff and three commissioners attending, and probably five staff that are actually presenting, including Dirk. And also, I would encourage everyone to download the app, it's really helpful, allows you to plan your day, find your sessions, et cetera. And also, I wanted to just make you aware, we got several events that are set calendar invites out for, including the intergovernmental dinner hosted by the Naperville Development, Naperville Development.
Partnership, thank you. That's on for a second. So we have finance?
Quick update, we are, finance staff, Jeremy and his team are in the process of getting the year-end closed out, doing an awesome job at that. Our auditors have been out for year-end planning and testing of internal controls, and that's gone very well. From the payroll side, W twos are complete and issued, and ten ninety-nine through AP just was completed. Lastly, we are in the process of reviewing our financial policies. This is something we do on an annual basis. Those policies will first be run through the finance committee and then will be brought forward for the entire board to review and eventually approve.
Thank you. All right, please, Director, stand. All right, next up, go.
Thank you. I'd like to provide a quick update on the well over at Naperville Golf Course. As you know, in mid-November, the well that provides the water for Naperville Clubhouse shut down. Our trade staff was able to restart it, but it would only operate for a short period of time before shutting down again. After consulting with well repair contractors, it was apparent there was a problem within the well, and there was a possibility that there were holes in the column pipe or possibly a problem with the pump or motor. Unfortunately, the only way we really could find out was to pull the eight-hundred-nineteen-foot well out of the ground for inspection. Staff contracted with three separate well repair companies with experience with wells of this depth and size, and we contract, requested quotes for removal and inspection, and also unit prices for all the well components in the event that we need to in the event that we need to repair or replace any of the parts in the well. Earlier this month, the contractor was able to complete the removal of the well as feared the column pipe does have significant corrosion and it resulted in several holes in the pipe. These holes reduce the water flow, forcing the pump to work beyond its capacity and eventually leading the pump control system to fault out shutting down the well. Based off our inspection and recommendations of the contractors, determined that the entire column pipe should be replaced. However, to replace the column pipe with the same pipe that was in the well would not be a wise choice because the pipe that was in the well did not have any additional corrosion protection. The best option would be replace the entire column with stainless steel, but that's a costly, uh, option. Working with the contractors and, and our staff, we decided a good alternative would be use stainless steel only but below the static water line, water level of the well and then galvanized pipe above the water line. The galvanized pipe is coated to prevent corrosion protection, but it's about a third less price than, third less in cost than stainless steel. The option, this option would reduce the cost for repairs by about $25,000. Um, also looking at a couple of other things on the well, the pump motor and well, um, bowl assembly were inspected and they're determined to be working order, but based off their age and the cost to remove the well again, it was decided probably wise to replace both of those items. And then finally, the 800-foot power cable that goes down the well, provides power for the motor, it was found to have water infiltrated in the ground wire. However, the three power leads in there were in good shape. So instead of replacing the entire power cable at a cost of over $20,000, we are able to replace only the ground cable for less than $1,000. The contractor is expected to provide us with an updated cost proposal here soon. And once we get that and approve it, we expect no later than maybe a couple of days for them to mobilize. And then once onsite, it should take about two or three days for them to get the well operational again. Any questions, at least on the well?
Kevin, are there any other options other than the well for bringing water to this site?
Right now, um, the closest site for us to bring in city water is at the very corner of the property. Several years ago, we did investigate this option and it's obviously a very expensive proposition for us to get the water from the corner of the property into the clubhouse. So right now, uh, it seemed like most cost-effective option was continuing the well.
Are we sure, are we sure about that? Cause it seems like we brought the city water, it might be higher expense initially, but over a period of time, it might be lower. I mean, do we have solid figures on those two options? And if not, how will we get solid figures on those two options? So we can, we can weigh in because it seems like, I mean, I don't know anything about it, it's not my own expertise, but it seems like we're doing a piecemeal type fix on this well. Um, I just would want to see it pop up again in two years, four years, six years for a future board. So it seems like we should do maybe a thorough analysis of both options so we can make a more informed decision.
Well, I can work with Eric and his team to see what it would possibly cost in today's dollars to get city water ruined into the clubhouse. Um, the timing of it, I don't know if we do have enough time to do a thorough investigation of that for us to get this well back online. Obviously, it's important for us to have this available if, for whatever reason, the weather turn, we want to open the clubhouse and have the golf course ready to, to be used. We want to have the water available as soon as possible.
Does the well service anything else other than just?
Just the clubhouse only.
Still be interested in the mail.
And, and we can certainly look at getting the, the costs associated with that maybe for the future. But I think the timing here is key as far as being able to move forward with getting the well service back to the clubhouse. Uh, moving the direction of the, of connecting the city water would take quite a bit of time to be able to go through the permitting, construction drawings, so on, to be able to have that happen. Uh, this, the approach that we're using is not a, a piecemeal approach. What we're doing is, uh, looking at the best way to be able to replace the well, but as cost-effectively as possible. So actually by, uh, moving to the stainless steel pipe under the water line, the galvanized pipe for the upper half of the pipe, that's actually an improvement over the, the pipe that was in the, the well before. Uh, and then replacing the pump motor as well as the bowl assembly, that will provide the new components, uh, there to avoid having to pull the well at future points within the next few years, uh, unless something were to fail.
Yeah, we're expecting with the components that we're replacing right now, normal well lifespan would be 10, 15 years. So we wouldn't expect to have this problem or an issue with this for, you know, assembly here down the road.
The cost of production is also an issue. Uh, DuPage Water Commission, which is how the city of Naperville gets its water, buys it from the city of Chicago at some of the highest prices in the country, it's $5 a gallon. That's what Chicago does. The cost of producing the water, once the wells is old, it's just the electricity.
Okay, just a couple of quick updates from golf.
Quick, Kevin, uh, just before we move on. Just to, to also clarify then, that based upon the, the cost associated with the repairs with the well, we are estimating that, uh, it will be over $50,000. So we will be bringing a contract back to the board to, to ratify at a future meeting.
Change room.
Change room. Uh, looking ahead, uh, golf staff is currently preparing for the 2023 season and, uh, obviously with a little bit of warmer weather we've had recently, we were able to actually open Naperville Cup. So that was nice. We, uh, obviously didn't have the facilities completely open at the clubhouse without water, so we put out some porta-potties, but we were able to get several golfers out there for the past few days. Uh, in fact, uh, we had a high of about 80 golfers on last Sunday. So everybody was pleased to be out there and, you know, we were able to communicate all the issues in Naperville to make sure everybody knew what was going on and people were just happy to be out there. Golf staff attended the job fair earlier this month and we had several new applications from the, uh, job fair, especially on the clubhouse side of it. Overall, our staffing for the 2023 season looks very promising. Uh, we do still have two full-time positions available in maintenance, but we do have a number of applications for both of those and a couple of reviews planned next week. So hoping for the best for those. Part-time staffing in both the clubhouse and maintenance overall looks solid. Uh, most managers are confident their positions will be filled with food service, possibly be in the, the one area where we're going to need a little bit more help on. Um, we just completed our Brooks Links membership renewals and I'm happy to say that over 90% of our current members renewed this year for, uh, resulting in about nearly $115,000 worth of revenue for the season. Only five members didn't renew and almost all of those cited relocation as the reasons why they weren't renewing. So good news on that front. And we have a number of members right now on the waiting list, so we're going to be able to fill those positions up very quickly. Also, uh, some promising numbers from our permanent tee time renewals with Springberg reopening. There's been a lot of interest in, uh, permanent tee times. Both courses are showing right now registrations up for the year. So we're expecting a bigger season this year on permanent tee times. Registrations aren't not complete, but we're expecting those to be completed very soon.
Good evening. Um, Kevin mentioned the job fair. Took a little bit of buying thunder here, but wanted to let you know that the job fair was held on Saturday, uh, January 7th. It's the job fair that we co-host with Kids Matter. And we had, um, approximately 725 attendees. That's the estimate that Kids Matter has shared with us. We had Stafford Park, golf, Fort Hill, the beach, the grill, tennis, birthday parties, childcare, and gymnastics that participated in the job fair and really represented the district. Well, it was pretty cold. Uh, wish I'd gotten more pictures. But we did see an influx of applications come through since the job fair and are very happy with those results. Also present were a couple of our partners. WDSRA was there and I had the opportunity to speak with their staff. They were also happy with the number of individuals that they spoke with and official finders that we work with, uh, for our software program are also present. And I didn't speak with them personally and did hear that they were happy as well. And then Bridget took a little bit of my thunder on this one too. So next week, Director of Marketing and Communications, Samara Luthman and I are presenting at the IAPV IPRA, I'm sorry, GeoHeights Conference, where our session is titled Winning the War for Talent and we're going to highlight the collaboration between HR and marketing in our recruiting efforts. And while I was standing in the on-deck position, it also hit me that Sam and I did this session, uh, virtually in December for the NRPA Aquatics Section. So it's obviously a very hot topic and, and people would like to hear about that. So finally, I'm happy to share that the HR Department has a new team member. We had added a position with the 2022 budget, the talent specialist position, and that individual left us late last year to accept a position in the private sector. But our newest team member, Marissa Kula, was an internal transfer from the Customer Service Department. Ashley's not too thrilled with me at the moment for stealing her, uh, but it's not the first time I've done that. Um, Marissa joined the district originally in May and really, she started with us on a part-time basis because I, we didn't want to take her right out of Customer Service and leave staffing levels, you know, in dire need there. So she's been splitting her time, but while she's been with us, she's really hit the ground running and we're excited to have her.
Any questions?
Hey Katie, this might be a question for you or IT on deck here, but I've noticed at the airports, almost all the fast food restaurants now have the little, uh, order on your own kind thing where you just punch your order in and then the staff there is almost 100% focused on the food preparation. Is that something that would, uh, did someone, I think Eric or somebody mentioned, or maybe it was Brad, uh, how it's hard to find staffing for some of our food and beverage, probably customer service? Is there anything that we're looking at and that we should be looking at to automate some of this? Again, like you see at all, almost all the fast food restaurants in the airports, no?
Yeah, Brad, can you speak directly to that?
That is something that we're moving towards as far as offering that to, to our patrons. Um, I mean, we began utilizing that, uh, portion of our food and beverage software last year at Centennial Grill, uh, even though with that, you still have to have the staffing levels to be able to, uh, to fully operate and to provide for that. But that is an option within the food and beverage software that we use is to, uh, have individuals order through an app and then fulfill those orders. So that's something that we can certainly look at further for some of the food and beverage operations.
Or even like the string that's right there at the counter?
Yes, there's those options as well. Uh, we've not gone that far, uh, with it, but we have, um, uh, we have, uh, moved towards having a QR code or having that app for, uh, individuals to use their smartphones to be able to, uh, to place those orders.
Thank you. Is information from that?
Good evening, everyone. Uh, I've got a few updates for IT for this evening. Um, the first one, just one of the things coming right up around the corner is, uh, we're sending out the invite for our annual cybersecurity training. It's just general best practice, uh, in any modern organization to ensure that all staff that use computers are getting training. Uh, so that invite's actually going to be going out, uh, Monday morning. Uh, and also just kind of an expansion of this, we're, uh, over the course of 2023, we're going to be providing optional content to staff through that same platform just to keep cybersecurity very front of mind to further empower them both for their work inside the district and personally. Other things going on, just focusing in through the year ahead. Uh, our big focus is going to be really on updates and life cycle management, uh, systems that are possibly ready to be replaced, whether it's computers, pieces of the network, software that's ready for new versions. Uh, along with that is taking where we started that last year, moving our email to Microsoft 365, um, going into the breadth of that platform and really starting to leverage it more for collaboration, um, additional communication and file access, uh, without being beholden to be inside of one of our buildings. Uh, and then along with other updates, uh, one very relevant for this meeting is, uh, later in the year, we're going to be kind of revisiting the general board, being set up, the AV and everything. Uh, just kind of modernizing and improve on that. Uh, the last update that I have, upcoming in the next month or two, uh, we're going to be going through assessing our Microsoft licensing true-up. Our Microsoft licensing is the biggest expenditure that comes out of IT every year. Uh, last year, we brought that before the board, actually in June. Uh, that was actually delayed. It's actually a Q1, uh, item just with the contract cycle. Uh, but due to actually the director's staffing changes as well as a change of vendor that's holding a state contract that got delayed until June of last year. So that'll be coming soon. Any questions?
Good evening, Commissioners. I've got a few updates for tonight. First of all, I wanted to provide a recap of 2022 and our sponsorship and advertising program. So we ended December at a total of $288,474, which is approximately up 8% compared to 2021, which was about $267,000. So the great thing is we continue to grow the sponsorship program year after year. We continue to add additional opportunities, which then helps us to expand revenue and also bring our new sponsors throughout the year. So sort of following on that whole theme of sponsorships, as you know, we're going to be presenting the Naperville Community Fireworks on the 4th of July later this year and we have our presenting sponsor, very excited about that. We've officially signed on Woody Buick GMC as our presenting sponsor and we appreciate his continued generosity. We also have several other opportunities that we are looking to sell and we're promoting those currently on our website and via social media and some other avenues. So we'll hopefully get some more sponsors on board for that. We, um, just this week, we completed recording five episodes that will make up the 2023 podcast series for the State of the Park District address with the theme of sustainability. And it'll launch on February 1st and will be available at napervilleparks.org/podcasts and also through SoundCloud, which can be downloaded from the App Store and Google Play. And additional promotional information will be forthcoming. So we're really happy to present that again via podcast. And I just found out the other day, in the five years that we've been producing the podcast, we've had nearly 20,000 listens. So of course that kind of flexes over what the themes are and what the most popular things are or the content that people are interested in. But I thought that was a really interesting statistic and it's nice to know that we're reaching that many people with it. Lastly, and was mentioned a couple of times, we've got state conference coming up next week and the marketing department will be represented at the annual agency showcase, which is put together through IPRA's Communication and Marketing Group. And we are submitting in three categories. So we're going to submit our Fort Hill billboard from 2022 for the large format category, our seasonal events card for the communications print category, and a 2022 virtual program guide series for the virtual brochure, brochure series. So we're very happy to showcase our work. And anyone that's going to be at conference next week, I encourage you to stop by and check out our submissions and also check out submissions from other area districts. Also fun to see what other people are doing. Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, good evening. We are continuing to manage our winter schedule with officers working from 8:00 in the morning until 10:30 at night as opposed to the summer schedule, usually working 8:00 in the morning until midnight. We have initiated our mandatory yearly training. In January, we're tackling defensive tactics. February, we'll be addressing the cast and pepper spray training. In March, we will knock out Caesar training. This will be in conjunction with the ongoing de-escalation training that we're conducting with the City of Naperville Police. And then by the time we get to April and May, we'll look at firearms, but at that point, we're also going to be going to our summer schedules. As it stands right now, I'll be advertising for two part-time police officer positions by the end of this month with the goal of getting them hired in the end of February, early March to get them trained up in over March and April for deployment on their own in May. And then in February, we'll be looking to hire our park service officers. We had eight last year. We're hopeful that we'll get upwards of four or five back, which is four or five more than we had back last summer. So we are looking forward to a kind of a seamless continuation into this summer with our park service officers.
Mrs. Parks?
Good evening. Uh, I thought I'd start with a topic we hear quite a bit about this time of the year. With the mild winter we've experienced to date, uh, our ice skating season has been very limited. As of this evening, daily high temps are forecasted. has been very limited. As of this evening, daily high temps are forecasted to dip below freezing towards the end of next week. So, if Mother Nature cooperates, staff anticipates filling our rigs next Tuesday and Wednesday with the hopes of possibly having them open for the next weekend. The plus side to the mild temps is that they've allowed staff an extended period to complete several projects over the last couple of weeks. For example, our restoration project at Absinthe West Pond is about ninety percent ramped up. Staff completed a large tree and shrub pruning and bed cleanup project at Centennial Beach, and our crews have used this winter season to visit several natural area sites to provide ongoing stewardship. January also takes off annual staff, full-time staff reviews, department and individual goal development, and the bidding and quotation process for the upcoming year's contractual services projects. Our fleet team is working with our vehicle and equipment vendors to determine which items on our 2023 capital replacement list might be available for procurement through our typical purchasing methods, and then which ones will require a little bit more of that out-of-the-box thinking. Once we have a better understanding of ordering and expected delivery timeframes, we'll be sure to share any updates with the board and provide regular updates. Generally speaking, order fulfillment timeframes on the equipment side are expected to be slightly improved as compared to the previous year. However, we are still hearing on some items that, to expect the year-plus lead time on delivery. Nothing new at this time of the past long regarding trucks, though we did hear from a new dealership source today that they were not expecting Ford to provide an ordering window for pickup truck orders again until next November. As I was able to share at the January fifth Parks and Recs Committee meeting, we had planned on ordering nine trucks for the 2023 calendar year. Due to price increases that in many cases were thirty to fifty percent higher than we had anticipated, we cut our order down to seven trucks, and then we heard back from Ford that we were going to be allotted one truck in 2023. So, if that ordering window does not open again until next, or this upcoming November, orders would not be fulfilled until 2024, which can be, was behind the ordering for the following year again. So, we'll look at shifting priorities from possibly 2024. We're looking at some of those alternative purchasing methods that we brought to the board earlier last year.
Is Ford really the only manufacturer that provides trucks that we can utilize?
So, that's a good question. You know, on one hand, we have, and we've tried to not, you know, bring in too many different colors or brands, but we did reach out to some other contacts, and it sounds like one of the other major manufacturers are also experiencing similar type of delivery issues. Thank you.
I probably, I almost used up all my minutes, but this, I have one brief update. So, it's in regards to the master plan, something that I had a chance to relay at the January fifth, 2023 Parks and Rec Committee meeting. As a top twenty-twenty-three Naperville Park District organizational and 2023-2025 strategic plan goal, the master plan is currently being updated based on the data collected last year from the Community Interest and Opinion Survey, and the data collected also through the market analysis and other sources of information, including the strategic plan and its goals and objectives. The master plan is on track to be updated and presented to the board before the end of the second quarter of this year. Additional updates regarding this topic will be provided as we work through the master planning process in the upcoming months, and that's all I have.
Thank you. Finally, recreation.
Thank you. I've got a lot of stats tonight, and they're all good ones, so that's a good thing. After a couple weeks of practice, the winter session of basketball games begin this weekend. We have a hundred-and-sixty-three teams overall, which is nine more teams than we had in the fall session, and this equates to approximately sixteen-hundred players. Dance program, our dance academy participation numbers have exceeded last winter by forty-one percent, with seven-hundred-and-twenty-four participants enrolled. This number exceeds even our pre-COVID registrations back in 2019 by over seventy participants. So, that's wonderful news. Those of you who haven't been, haven't had the chance, if you get a chance to go to Matilda, that is our Magical Starlight Theater production. Last weekend, we had ticket sales that exceeded the 2020 winter show of Wizard of Oz by twenty-four percent with the sale of two-hundred, two-thousand-two-hundred-and-thirty-one tickets. And we hope to exceed sales again this weekend, as we've already sold over a thousand tickets for this upcoming weekend. So, that's really good news. Fort Hill Activity Center, with only thirteen days left in the Fort Hill Membership Zero Enrollment Promotion, we're close to hitting our goal of five hundred new paid memberships with four-hundred-and-thirty-four enrolled. We also have a hundred-and-forty-three insurance-based memberships and two group exercise memberships that have added this year. And last but not least, this is kind of one of those things that I can't even believe I'm bringing up in January. We have already begun the Centennial Beach lifeguard hiring. We've had a couple of interviews. We're working on getting our returning guards committed, and we're on our way. So, I'll give you an update every month so that we're ready for the summertime. So, any questions? Okay, thanks.
All right. The next regular meeting of the Park Board, Board of Commissioners, will be February ninth, 2023, at seven PM at Fort Hill, which we have executive session this evening.
Move to adjourn to executive session to discuss land acquisition per section two C five of the Open Meetings Act.
Seven. Sorry, Rockoff, please.
First, isn't it Ruffin?
Yes.
Fisher Thompson?
Yes.
Fisher Anzier?
Yes.
Fisher Janner?
Yes.
Fisher McBrum?
Yes.
Fisher Todd?
Yes.
Fosnate Gibson?